To order. All the meeting to order and roll call please.
Chairwoman Enoverado.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Here.
Mr. Bolt is not here today. Mr. Graziano.
Here.
Ms. Guam.
Here.
Mayor Melham.
Here.
Ms. Nettleford.
Here.
Mr. Beniero is not present. Mr. Zangary.
Here.
Mr. Guinean is not here. Mr. Di Lorenzo.
Here.
Mr. Harris is not here today and Mr. Mariano.
Here.
What's the lead?
Thank you, Regent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, on a nation, on a ballot, in the judicial, with the reason just for all. What record shows this? Did any see her? Barthon? Fine, okay, so he is.
I'm going to the requirements of the public meetings at Chapter 231 PL 1975. Notice of this meeting was published in the July 20th, 2022 edition of the Star Ledger and the July 21st, 2022 edition of the Bellville Times.
Any patients? No. Then we'll move on. Slap vocal minutes?
Not at this time.
Bill list. Date in August 11, 2022. Do you have a motion, Chief?
Make a motion.
Somebody here?
Yeah.
Yeah, second.
Mr. Enoverado.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ms. Nettleford. Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Guinean.
Yes.
We have four resolutions this evening to be memorialized. First one. It's a resolution to application number PV 2108. It's in the matter of application of Ostrich Bellville Properties. Lot 1, 414 Main Street. Did everybody receive this?
Yes.
Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Chairwoman Enoverado.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ms. Nettleford.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Guinean.
Yes.
Our second resolution to be memorialized is PV 2114. Brown, yes, Bellville LLC, 325 Washington Avenue. Did everyone receive this?
Yes.
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Chairwoman Enoverado.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ms. Nettleford.
Upstate.
And Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Okay, our third one. It's PV 2109, Upper Room Management, 268, 270 Washington Avenue. Did everyone receive this?
Yes.
Can I get a motion?
Make a motion. Second.
Chairwoman Enoverado.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ms. Nettleford.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Guinean.
Yes.
Okay, our last memorialization is PV 2204, 4553 Washington Avenue. Did everyone receive?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion. Second.
Chairwoman Enoverado.
Yes.
Mr. Vanda.
Yes.
Mr. Graziano.
Yes.
Ms. Guam.
Yes.
Mayor Melham.
Yes.
Ms. Nettleford.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Guinean.
Yes.
New business. First up is 705, 757 Main Street, PV 2013.
Good evening, Chairwoman. How's everyone doing tonight? For the microphone.
Turn it off. Think you need to.
So my name is Dean Donatelli, for the record. I'm the Special Redevelopment Council for the Township. And Madam Chair, the planner for the first matter is running late and in traffic. So I'm wondering if you could, planner for the second matter is here. Is it okay if we switch and hear the second matter first and then the first?
That would be acceptable.
Thank you.
Come back to that. So we're.
I think there were, actually, there was a little bit of confusion also with the new, the new meeting times.
At the next, we're going to your 2201, 605 and 609 Washington Avenue and 174 Graylock Parkway.
Thank you again. I'll just give you a brief introduction. Everyone knows Marion Wu Chi Carter from CME. She is the Township Planner and the Planning Planner. Again, my name is Dean Donatelli. I'm the Special Redevelopment Council. I just want to put everything in context. This is the, more or less, the second step in the redevelopment process. The first one is the Township Council develops a resolution directing the Planning Board to do a preliminary investigation. It's done by the Planning Board Planner or Township Planner. She looks into the records of the condition of the property and assesses the property based on certain criteria that are listed in the statute. And the role of the board tonight is to make a determination as to whether the property satisfies those criteria based on the planner's recommendation. This is a public hearing, so there should be the opportunity for the public to comment. If there's no questions for me, I'll introduce Marion Wu Chi Carter from CME.
Have any questions? No.
Thank you.
Okay, it's better for me when I'm heading it because otherwise I look too far away and you can't hear me. So the Planning Board generally implements projects and gets all its authority from the municipal land use law. And that's what you're used to, hearing applications and master plan provisions and master plan reviews. And that's all authorized by the state through the municipal land use law. The other element of what the Planning Board does is based on the redevelopment and housing law, which also authorizes the Planning Board to hear studies that would identify reasons to designate in need of redevelopment or in need of rehabilitation. And that is done as a recommendation to the governing body on whether or not you feel that it meets the criteria to be designated as such. So that's where we are tonight. Thank you. We would be hearing the testimony on the report that CME undertook to evaluate whether or not the property that was designated as an area in need, that was identified to study, meets the criteria to be designated in area in need of redevelopment. And that's a very unique designation. What the designation is itself is for anybody from new on the board, I'm repeating this, for anybody that's also at the meeting that's new, I've said this before, it is one of the tools that the states give the local municipality to address places that are not getting improved or they're not getting invested in or they're not moving forward with the rest of the municipality. And one of the biggest criticisms that a lot of people that don't understand this process is that, well, based on that, it sounds like everywhere could be designated. And that's not true. The places that can be designated are places that meet the criteria. And there are probably many places that are not under study in town today that meet the criteria as well. But you can only do it one at a time. And as places come up and the council asks the Planning Board to study them, you move forward, do the study, and then make a recommendation whether or not it qualifies. The. So the light study report has been available for public review since April 6. And it studies the properties at 605, 609 Washington and 174 Graylock Parkway. The report involves site visits, photographic survey of the property, a study of all the building permits or any violations that existed on the property. Goes back many years to as far back as the records for the township exist. And also evaluates environmental conditions and other records at the state level regarding this property. So that is what the report summarizes and details all of the research done on the property. The conclusions of the report are that the area does meet one of the criteria to be designated in need of redevelopment. And it outlines all those reasons why and provides photographic evidence of the issues that exist on site. The study area includes a gas station with an automotive repair shop and a residential property that's also next door. So as we move through, what I'll do is I'm going to talk about the criteria. So. Let's start out with the criteria for the gas station and the analysis that was done for the gas station. The reason why I'm going to start there is because that's the property of the two that qualifies. Based on the report, any visits, the residential property does not qualify. But based on the state law, because it is part of the study area, it can be included in the designation if it's found that that property also supports the designation and the redevelopment of that site. And so I'm going to give you some details on the gas station and the automotive property. Somewhere along the line, we have open complaints. It's a section that's written that was from the database of the construction office. And it talks about. It talks about over time improvements that were done and repairs that were done or any outstanding issues. It appears that, I'm not going to be able to see the date of this, but there was at one point a crash where a car ran into one of the pumps and had to be repaired and replaced. And so that is one of the main, that was one of the unique issues that affects the site. At another point in time, it was identified that the site did have leaks. And so there's environmental contamination, there's groundwater contamination, there's a whole discussion on the status of that and how it is expanding from the area and cleanup needs for that. A third component is the interior and major characteristics of the repair shop itself. It needs, you know, basically, there's cracks in the building, it needs some major systems replacement, and even the lifts are not functioning. So the characteristics of the site itself, the repair shop, are not to modern standards. That's one of the main issues affecting the site. The site itself is a gas station with the automotive repair that is no longer permitted on the avenue. So the goal of the local municipality is to have all of these nonconforming preexisting uses move into modern conditions and get replaced with something that's going to be up to code and meet the needs for modern usage. Anybody who goes to gas stations often and knows that they don't build small little gas stations with two pumps anymore. The modern gas station design is for multi-pumps and convenience store and other services, not a small gas station that is wide open to the street and has pumps within 20 feet up the curb line that present a danger and a safety hazard for the community. So even if this gas station was redesigned as a gas station, it wouldn't fit on that site. That site is way too small to accommodate a modern station. So there's many aspects about the site that make it suitable for study and that after the study was done, identified it as clearly meeting the criteria for designation. So I can go through, I was planning on highlighting these before I was talking, before I was speaking. I thought I would have another hour to highlight this, but I have to now rely on my 50-year-old vision to read some of the documentation, but that's okay. So. Let me see. So let me read it out loud so everyone is clear on the designation. So Criteria D is the assessment of what is met by this study. So the study here can be applied to say that Criteria B states that areas with buildings or improvements, which by reasons of dilapidation, obstinance, obsolescence, overcrowding, faulty arrangement or design, lack of ventilation, light and sanitary facilities, excessive land coverage, deleterious land use or obsolete layout, or any combination of these factors are detrimental to the safety, health, morals and welfare of the community. I think the fact that there was an incident here already where there was a car that crashed into a pump, came straight over the sidewalk, right past the bus stop, which is right in front of the site. I have pedestrians in the photographs that I took for the site. It is a danger to the community. It's situated in a location on a site that's too small for a gas station with pumps that are not protected and set back far enough. So the obsolete design here is, I think, visible for everyone to see regardless of other conditions of the building and the maintenance of the building and other criteria that are outlined in the report that are detailed. Details all the cracks, the outdoor storage of automotive tanks and utilities. The surface area of the station itself is in such disrepair. There's cones placed all around on the site. So the functioning of that site is, the site is dilapidated and the functioning is not safe for public use. The statute, the state statute that authorizes local municipalities to utilize studies like this to move development forward, to correct these situations is exactly, it's exactly why this exists, to correct situations such as this. I think, I don't like talking a lot, you guys know that about me. I feel that the report can speak for itself and that there's lots of details in there besides the ones that I mentioned that outline why the site meets the Criteria D of the statute and allowing it to be designated in need of redevelopment. What happens here tonight is a recommendation to the city council. The city council will then further discuss the report and hold another hearing and make a decision for themselves whether or not they decide to designate or not designate. And they will look to the Planning Board's recommendation as well. This decision has nothing to do with finances or taxes or anything else. So if anybody starts asking questions about that, can't answer them, it has nothing to do with it. It's only based on the criteria of the statute for the redevelopment law and the conditions of the property under the report. And I think based on that, I'm just asking if anyone has any questions. And I think that's all I have to say.
City member have any questions?
Marion, can you, I know you talked about the accident with the pump. Environmental cleanup? Not necessarily at that time, but currently, is there any environmental? I read the report, so I know, but I'm just asking.
Environmental cleanup is required. There's groundwater contamination that's been documented on the site that is leaching outside the property up to neighboring properties. And that will also affect the home next door. And that's also why this was studied and included. And, you know, so that's an ongoing thing. The whole goal of this designation is to focus on what needs to be corrected and establish, then if it's designated, the township can establish a redevelopment plan to correct the conditions, clean up the site and correct the obsolete conditions of the gas station and automotive repair shop.
Anyone else? No questions? I'll wrap it up to the public. Anyone have any questions about this report? Mr. Johnson?
These should be questions of the planner.
Yes.
Marion?
You got me. Mario Johnson, 95 Bell Street.
I'll give it to you. I'll write that.
I'll write, yeah.
I'll write that.
Okay.
Got it?
Yeah.
Yeah, just a question, just for clarification purposes. I know the purpose of it is to, it's an area designated in area of redevelopment. But my question is, what if I bought that property on my own and decided to buy the house next door? The town is already in an area of rehabilitation. Would I have, couldn't I just build that without going through this process right here in front of the board?
Chip, they asked the questions to the planner. It's not really a planned question. You're welcome to, at the end, you'll have an opportunity to comment on it, but it's really.
Okay, that's the question I asked. That was the question I asked.
Yeah. And you still can do that. Anyone can do that.
So why are we even here? The town is in an area of rehabilitation. I can just.
Oh, I see your question.
Okay, in other words, the whole town is already designated. So in other words, if I just said, you know what, I'm going to buy that gas station, I'll do the cleanup on my own, then why are we even here?
Designating it. You're here because there's two different designations. The law has two different designations because it's designed to address two different things. The town is designated a rehab zone in need of rehabilitation. This gas station and repair shop needs more than rehabilitation. It's unsuitable for the site. It's, as I stated, it's not large enough, it's not designed safely enough, and it couldn't be redesigned easily to meet modern standards for a gas station. Let me finish. Okay. So that is the difference. A rehab designation doesn't help this site change. It doesn't help this site get environmentally cleaned up. You need the next step, which the state designated as in need of redevelopment, to help a site that is this distressed.
No, I know what you're saying, but.
That's the difference. So the rehab designation doesn't correct the situation, but the redevelopment, in need of redevelopment designation could correct this. And that's what the state gave the municipal, local governments, the tool to do.
No, I heard what you said, but the point I'm bringing up, if I'm a developer and I just said, I want to buy that gas station, I'll do the cleanup, it's the same thing, isn't it? I'm taking the risk of cleaning it up and everything.
And you know what? How long has Bellville been waiting for that to happen? And the reason that this law was enacted and that we go through this process of designating redevelopment is to force that correction to happen because developers on their own won't always do the right thing. And they won't always go in and clean something up just because it's there. And so the goal of this law is to allow the local governments to see, identify the problem. They know what it takes to correct it and to implement a correction, and that's what this is for.
And you made a comment before that the entire Washington Avenue was rezoned to eliminate gas stations, if I understood correctly?
I believe gas stations are not permitted in.
But you still have one left on Washington Avenue by the corner, by Williams Street and.
And maybe that, maybe the council may request that be studied next, I don't know. Like I said, there are many properties that could qualify for these criteria, but there's a process that has to be gone through and you can only study a few at a time. And this was requested by the council to be studied, and that's why this is, you know, before us.
I'm just saying, all right, I understand, but I have a different view of it, but we're not going to go back and forth. But I also noticed that you made a comment about a car hitting the gas pumps there. Well, we just had one recently on the corner of Little and Union Avenue where the car went up, it's a residential house, the car went up on a sidewalk, so a car can go up anywhere, it doesn't have to be a gas station.
It could, but at least it's not.
But this happened recently.
A gas pump, which is much more dangerous.
Okay, any other comments? Mr. Sheldon, please.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon.
If I make sure that your questions are for.
Why am I the only one who you keep saying, keep it short? I have questions.
You shouldn't say, keep it short.
I will, I will, I will speak as quickly as I can, thank you.
She didn't say, sure.
Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street.
Okay.
Ms. Wu Chi Carter's argument here, the justification for ADOR designation, seems to be completely hinged on, or D. There are eight criteria for ADOR designation. You said earlier that your whole argument is based on D, which says, as you read, areas of buildings or improvements, which by reason of dilapidation, obsolescence, et cetera, and it goes on, this also speak about safety, health and welfare of the community.
It also means H. I didn't have time to speak to that, but it's in the report.
To that end, you spoke about an accident. A car went over the curb, hit one of the gas pumps. Since you apparently did the research and have the records for that, do you know of hand, were there any injuries? Were there any, was anyone killed? What was the extent of that collision? Did a fire, did a fire erupt? Was it, was it just a gas pump got dented and it was repaired very quickly thereafter?
The pump had to be replaced based on construction data and records of the construction office. I did not look up the accident report. I did not look that up. It wasn't necessary to me. The fact that the incident happened was enough of an issue.
Right. Well, I'll give you that much. I mean, obviously, the location of this gas station is on probably the busiest road in Bellville at an intersection which is already very busy and is going to get much busier owing to all of the surrounding construction that's already been greenlighted. But let me just draw a hypothetical, in keeping with your argument. You're citing safety concerns that a car could go over the curb and crash into, has already crashed into a pump, it could happen again. But let me just draw a hypothetical. Suppose that all of the efforts here to give ADOR designation and redevelopment take place, and those two lots, the house and the gas station, are merged into a single lot, and lo and behold, in a couple of years from now, we have a large mixed-use residential structure on that corner with 70 or more units inside of it. What's to keep a car from going over the curb once again? What's to keep a car from going over the curb once again, crashing into that building, setting in a blaze, and now you have 100 or 200 people inside that building? Yesterday, hopefully, will be a sprinkler, a fire suppression system. But if your concern is, boy, you know, this corner is just a bad location for any type of construction because of the potential that a car could jump the curbside and crash into a business or some other entity. If, when a new use is put on that corner, what's gonna stop a car there down the road from crashing into that same building? And the ramifications of a crash, someone going over the curb and crashing into a new building, which may be not just a gas station, a house, but a four, five-story, seven-story mixed-use residential building now being in peril of catching, catching on fire?
So my, my inclusion in the discussion of the incident that happened for this site was included because this is a gas station. And it's a gas station on a corner that is, on a property that is undersized with pumps that are too close to the road. So what that does is, is create a situation that now, especially that government knows about that, we're having a public hearing that's identifying that this is a dangerous situation. It's happened before, the market on its own has not corrected this. The gas station pump was rebuilt right back in the same place where it was. We've continued this unsafe condition. And so the purpose of this is to stop that and to replace this with a project or a building that will not have that kind of dangerous situation created. Now, every building along any street has the potential to be hit. But they want to be designed in a way where they meet current code and they're safe against those kinds of issues. Right now, this station was built how many years ago? It does not meet current code, and you can't, you know, you can't control that. You can control new construction, but you can't control this old stuff. So that's, to me, the hypothetical is, is a really valid, because the issue is the safety and the existing conditions and how unsafe they are. New development won't be evaluated when new development comes in for construction and will have to, and will have to follow current safety guidelines.
Well, we'll see. We've been down this road before, and I'm gonna go on the record by saying that I will bet each of you a dollar, maybe five dollars.
Is that a question?
Well, this, this, this project is going to result, because I've already had sources tell me, this is only 70, 70 unit, at least a 70-unit mixed-use building on this corner. That's what is happening. And to follow up on what Mr. Rose asked, why isn't this being done just with rehabilitation? Why are you going through the ANOR process? What was said is that ANOR designation is a predicate.
Is this a question?
Yes.
No, this is not a question. You're testifying, in which case I'd have to put you under oath to do so, and that happens later. But if you'd like to testify, you can wait and...
I'll speak about, all right, when we have the testimony phase, if I'm not threatened again to be removed from the room. No, I was at the last meeting.
I was here, and I did not see anyone get threatened or anything.
And it's on video, Mr. Marinello, you want to check that, I just posted it yesterday, which is also gonna be heading on its way to the AG's office and the OPIA.
I was sitting here for that whole meeting, and nobody threatened you or made you leave. I was here.
Mrs. Norberg said, Mr. Sheldon, if you continue speaking about the financial situation, I'm going to have you removed from this room.
No, I'm not sure. Maybe you and I disagree as to whether or not that's a threat.
Maybe I was in peril in the first at the time. I'll talk about the ANOR situation when we are asked. We're going to be given a chance to testify.
Yes.
All right, I'll talk about that and what the financial interests are, and having an ANOR designation over the rehabilitation program.
You're welcome to testify when the time comes.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Fran Tantone?
Vincent Fran Tantone. Okay. Ms. Bucci, let me state to you, your concern, it's a dangerous situation there. There's another gas station on Washington Avenue, similar setup, fairly similar, it's not exact, and all that. Were you contacted to do this study just because of safety matter?
The council authorized the study.
Only on this gas station, is that correct?
Generally, yes. It's in one site at a time, if you can't really accomplish, you'd need lots, you'd need lots of people working on at the same time to do, to do more than one study area at a time, so.
So the other gas station you wanted us to look at?
Was not. Uh, maybe tomorrow, if you bring it up.
All right, the, I'm familiar with the, how could I put it, the explosive dangers between natural gas and gasoline?
I'm not an engineer, but I know natural gas is volatile.
Right. There's plenty of business on the avenue, mine included, have a lot of that. My first driver, which has a big gas line to it, is right in about three or four feet from my storefront, which is closer to the curb than these gas pumps and all that.
Is it a vent, or is it a gas line? Usually they're underground, the vents extend upward, but not the line itself.
No, it's a gas line that feeds the dryer.
Would you like us to study your property?
It's above ground. No, because I'm not gonna build a seven-story high-rise there, okay?
It's already present.
Oh, okay.
So we, you know, we know why this is being done.
Maybe the owner would...
Yeah, we know why this is being done. I'll put that on the record again and all that. And we have other businesses on the avenue which have similar dangerous things right up to the sidewalk. In addition, are you aware that public services now, I see on Broadway and North and several here, which I don't understand from a safety standpoint, they're now installing the gas meters and the gas line in front of the building, right in front of the building, right next to the front entrance? That, to my thing, when I first seen that years ago, I said, this is extreme danger. I mean, the car jumps it, you've got the main gas line exposed right from somebody's front door. Is that a danger?
I agree with you. I agree with you, every opportunity that I have as a planner, in providing redevelopment recommendations and plans, I require that to be screened and on the side, not in front and exposed. But the BPU gives and controls the utilities, and sometimes the utilities have the ultimate say on the location. And it depends on the regulations. If it's a redevelopment plan, there is a chance that you can get the public service or PSCNG, whichever utility it is, to not put it right up in front and center. But if, if it is not, if it's in a neighborhood zone, they have the authority to make that choice.
They're actually doing that on all the houses in though, putting it out in the front. Can we put an ordinance on the books that they're true where that is?
I'd have to look into it, because there's some, it would, I think it depends on certain things. There's certain, certain instances where, where the public utility will go along with the local ordinance, and some instances where they won't.
And again, I don't know if you would agree, I don't know if you saw last night's news, another house completely obliterated instantly, it was a gas explosion. Natural gas is much more explosive than liquid gasoline. I mean, gasoline will catch fire and they put it out, but this is an explosion. Would you agree with that?
Yeah.
And the other thing, are you, as your position, you know, you're a planner and all, I'm sure you study different things, are you aware of Matthew Boxer, the former state controller, his redevelopment report?
Not by that name, no. I'm not sure what you're, what you're referring to and what relevance it has to this.
Well, it has, it has a lot of relevance, because I've been fighting redevelopment since 1980, when these criteria were only five criteria. And then our legislature, because of developers, had lunch with them, they added all these three or four other things there. Some are legitimate, like when they hit the Big Biscuit Fire, the Labor Day Fire.
Mr. Fran Tantone, will we stay with questions?
Yeah, well, I'm asking her if she's familiar with the Matthew Boxer report.
She said she wasn't.
Okay, so she's not. All right, then I'll follow up with that when I make my comments. Thank you.
Mr. Fleishman?
Can I come back, can I come back when I have to pick up the emergency room? Frank Fleishman, 833 Andrew. You started out your testimony with an accident that happened with a automobile hitting the pump. Was that recent? Is it relatively recent, or?
The date is in the report, I just don't recall it. It is, it's believed it's 2019. Thank you.
So in your study of this property, basically, your conclusion, would it be fair to say your conclusion is that it's really focused on an environmental issue as well as potential structural issues with the property?
There's all, all, all three things. The layout, the, the condition of the building, the layout on the site, and the environmental issues and the cleanup requirements. So it's all those things.
And would it be fair to say that the reason why the neighboring residential property is included in this area's study is it's believed that contamination from the commercial property has spread to that property?
It is, it is, it is also another concern. The area of study is, is identified by the council, and the reasons for that are not very always clear. Sometimes it's the impact of the degraded uses on the surrounding properties, and then to look at both at the same time and see if they meet the criteria.
When you say degraded uses, can you give me an example of that?
Well, the, I believe the gas station is the example. If you were a single-family home, they look out onto a, an open dumpster area, decrepit paving, lots of cones, there's oil storage and other fluid storage right outside their bedroom windows. So that's the kind of, you know, situation that there is. And that really is not suitable to be a neighbor for a single-family or two-family residential building.
You were also saying that there were, according to the court that's been done, that there are leaks, I'm assuming there'd be leaks from like the gas tanks, you know, under DEP?
Well, that, the assumption is that's how the contamination occurred, from previous gas, gas leaks.
Has there been testing done to, to confirm that?
Yes, oh, it's, it's in the databases for the DEP, it's there.
There's another question, I can't remember who it was. Thank you.
Are there any other comments? Close this portion.
Mr. Donatelli, is there anyone else who's going to do a plan, speaking later, or is it just...
No, thank you, which is good for the...
Okay, I'm gonna open up to the public again. Your opinions, testifying. Mr. Sheldon, no questions.
I guess this is the testimony phase, I think that you swear in?
Yes. Do you swear from the testimony here? Both of you, the two, the two, and not the most...
Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street, here in Bellevue. So follow up to what Mr. Fleishman was just asking about environmental testing. It was just on the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection Active Contamination website the other day, because I happened to discover that the property that the Board of Ed is now using for this new athletic facility on Courton Street is included among the active contamination sites. Sent an email to Dr. Topco and their council, have not gotten a response back, not surprising. But I didn't bother to notice if this property, the gas station, if this is also on that active contamination list. Does, does Ms. Bucci Carter have the denouement hand if the gas station property is on the DEP?
It is.
It is, it is, all right. And you said that environmental testing has been done. I assume that corrings, drillings have taken place to assess the extent of the site contamination?
Yeah, this is a summary of whether you're for or against the project.
Well, I'll get to that in a moment.
But you had your opportunity to speak and ask the questions.
This is testimony. I read the statutes, you're basically able to say anything you want as long as it's relevant to the case. I mean, that's the state law.
But you're questioning our planner right now.
Well, I have follow-up questions based on the, on some of the things that other residents ask.
Well, you had your argument.
The argument was made earlier that the reason the, the house on Graylock is, is being included here is that there's been a spread of contamination.
That was stated in Ms. Bucci's comments right from the beginning.
What no one has bothered to mention is that that's not the only house next to the gas station. North of the gas station on Washington Avenue, from my recollection, is at least one, possibly two houses before you get to the American Legion.
It's also on the report.
So are those, are those houses also in peril? Are they, are they also now dealing with leaching of toxins, carcinogens into their property? And if so, what's going to be done to address the, the needs of those homeowners?
That's the reason why we're here tonight.
But I mean, your, your, your laser focus on the gas station, this home.
Because they caused the problem.
And that was also the target of the study. We haven't been asked to study any of the problems.
So if you go to remediate, you can't, you can't just focus on the gas station property. If that gas station has contaminated the adjoining properties, then there should be a legal imperative to have the owner clean up the, the site to everybody's satisfaction, so that you just don't benefit one particular, two particular property owners. There are other property owners here potentially at risk, so...
If they are, and if they are, I don't know that they are, but let's assume for the moment.
You have the environmental study, right?
I have, I have the area needs study from...
Can, can, I know that that document now becomes public domain, but why...
It's, I think it's been public for quite a while.
Where was it?
It was sent.
Yeah, I had it, and I can email it to you.
All right, well, do I need to go through the means of operating more, can I?
I'll send it to you right now.
All right, would appreciate it, I...
Let me finish what I was saying. If there is damage to other properties, the person who caused that damage, or the property that caused that damage, has responsibility to clean up that damage, but that does not require it to be included within the redevelopment study.
Understood, understood.
So these two were asked to be studied, so these two are what's included. You make a good point, if those other properties have contaminants on them that derive from this use, I'm sure they probably know that by now, but if they don't, they should look into it so that their rights can be protected.
For the record, were those other property owners noticed? Are they within the 200-foot notification?
I don't, I still don't know what properties you're talking about. If they're directly next to this gas station, then they're within 200 feet.
Immediately north on the gas station on Washington Avenue. From what I recall, there are potentially two residential properties immediately north of the gas station, between the corner and where the American Legion post is, and that's, then beyond that, you get to the motorcycle wall. But I believe there are two other residential properties adjacent to the gas station.
They, I'm sure that they receive whatever notice is required under the statute. That's what happens, it's been, it's been noticed.
Well, council, when you're doing an ANOR consideration, are you required, or is the applicant or the planner required to notice everyone within a 200-foot radius where you're...
It's not the same as the municipal, I don't know.
That's what, that's what I was leading up to, it's not the same. So there is a distinct possibility that those other property owners have no awareness of...
Of this hearing.
Of this, of this hearing and the contamination.
But this hearing doesn't include their property?
Well, theoretically, that's correct, but the contamination has now involved their properties.
And if I was them, I would certainly...
It's reclosed, is it? What's closed? The, the DEP case? Approximately 580 feet away from Lot 9, though this contamination is considered closed by the NJDEP. Page six.
All right, so if it's closed, that means that no, no further remediation would be necessary. So doesn't that undermine the argument that this ANOR study satisfies the D criteria? You just said that the case is...
No, it was remediated and was already closed.
No, the case is over.
It's still...
Someone just said the case is over.
I'm reading the report.
All right. So there's a lot of confusion. Now I'm gonna have to look into this myself. If it's over. All right. As I was trying to say earlier, and I was told to wait until the testimony phase, why, let's cut to the chase, and why this matter is being considered for ANOR designation rather than falling under AEGIS, the township-wide rehabilitation program. ANOR designation is a predicate, is an absolute necessary step in order for a property to then subsequently get a pilot or long-term tax exemption. Without the ANOR designation, that will never happen. So again, knowing the track record for this current administration, I will absolutely bet the mortgage that what is in the works right now is that these two properties are going to be merged, raised, and in their place, we will soon see another huge mixed-use retail on the ground floor with upwards of 80 residential units on anywhere from four to seven stories. That's what's going to eventually happen. That's why you're now considering ANOR designation because some connected developer has been assured that he or she is going to get a nice lucrative tax abatement for the next 25 to 30 years, and this is the first step towards that end. It's all in video. We'll see what happens in a couple of years from now, whether my predictions come true.
It's a lot of assumptions, so we'll see.
Yeah, well, a lot of the assumptions I've made over the last few years have come true. First with Ms. Blomond illegally serving as a Class 4 member, and then the illegal operation of this plant.
Mr. Sheldon, I can't allow that.
Yeah, so, well, a lot of...
Please save all of the top.
Well, a lot of things happen here that seem to be running afoul of the law. And even particularly, the last case you guys heard.
That's not...
You allowed second-floor story offices which are not permitted. I'm in the effort of appealing that decision. All right?
Thank you.
Mr. Frank Tantoni?
They are permitted.
Are they not?
It's there.
Tell me exactly where it is.
They're permitted. I promise you that. They're in current status.
Come on.
Well, I'll tell you, I'm opposed to declaring...
Do you swear your first?
Yes, please, yes, one.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give?
We'll be the truth, the truth and nothing but the truth.
Yes, I do. I'm opposed to this because this, let's face it, it's got nothing to do with safety. This is all about catering to another developer who's gonna build wonderful luxury apartments but wouldn't dare have his family living there, and he wants to live in his low-density areas, which we've seen time and time again. Now, in regards to this, the report, the criteria under the state redevelopment statutes and all that, I said earlier, we only had five criteria, one by one for different reasons. F was a legitimate one. In 1985, I believe, there was a big fire, burnt down 10 city blocks. It was impossible for any developer to afford to repair and rebuild that. So the state added that criteria. Any area in excess of five acres due to a fire, that's a legitimate area for declaring an area in need of redevelopment. But then we go a little further. They added two more. And then we go to H, smart growth. If you notice, one little short line, and if you read it, what does it say? It says nothing. It just says, "Any developer wants, we can give them anything they want." Anything, any reason. H, it's such a joke. Anything can be an area in need of redevelopment. Now, this Bucci says, you know, "Dangerous, an accident. A car ran up and hit the pumps." I neglected to ask if there are boulevards in front of that. I'm here in Belleville 54 years. I've witnessed many accidents on Washington Avenue. One ran into my laundromat. The guy was drunk, bounced off two cars, went over another little car, and right into my storefront. Luckily, it was 11 o'clock at night. I had just closed. There were no people there. Or they would have been sitting right there in the front where I had chairs right against the plate glass windows, not laminated glass in my windows. So this thing about danger, you know, it happens all the time. 10 years ago, a car crash hit into an eye doctor I worked for in South Orange in the parking lot. The guy's foot got stuck in the L-circuit, right into the operating room, while the eye doctor was operating on an eye. Three years ago, the same eye doctor got hit from the other side. Yeah, but, you know, this is what you use as a criteria because a car ran and hit the pump.
It's only one.
All right?
It's only one of them.
This is one of the criterias. But these things happen all the time. Accidents happen, and they happen all the time. And like I say, and I want you to understand, this much more dangerous situation with these gas lines being right out front, which can be hit by a car.
Which we appreciate, and we're gonna look into that.
And then...
Do you ordinate like?
You know, I don't know if you understand your role. You've been on this board for many years, Mr. Norgerano. You understand? This is the time when the public has to make comments. You shouldn't interrupt them. It's not a question and answer.
We don't have to discuss a poor accident here in this town or in other towns. What we want to do is hear a summary of why you don't like it. Yes?
Well, if you stop interrupting me, like you always do, you would hear my comments. This is the time for us to make comments. Not a question and answer. I'm not answering questions. I'm making statements. And you keep interrupting everybody because you don't like it.
Because you don't want to hear a poor accident that has ever happened.
Because you know how you're gonna vote before you get here, so you didn't even want to listen to the public. You know, and you've got a long history. I know your history. I've been here. You know how long I've been here and come to these meetings. And so, stop interrupting the public. Allow us to make our comment. This is the time for public comment, not your interrupting me.
Finish comments.
Yes. Again, I'm against this. Now, we've been fighting this for a long time. In the 1980s, developers come in. They went to the commission at that time, and the planning board, and they tried to ram through the condominium boom. They actually declared Mill Street to Jerome Street an area in need of redevelopment. We had to hire at the time, the citizens, we hired Mr. William Brock, the biggest redevelopment attorney in New Jersey at the time, and we won. But it cost us money. We proved that all these phony reasons for this redevelopment was wrong. Several times, the citizens have had to hire lawyers and all that, and this is all it is. So you're not planning, and you're not doing this for the good of the citizens of Belleville and the criteria. Now, all these things, it's not allowed. It's not allowed because you changed the zone. This gas station was allowed when it was built. So you keep changing the zone, and then you tell them, "Oh, it's not allowed" because you made it not allowed, and it's a real disgrace. And let me tell you something. We used to have, years ago, and I probably have to go back 40, we had real, real qualified people on the board, really made good questions, would ask the applicants serious questions, and they didn't approve everything all the time. What I see here now, and I'll make exception to some of the new members, all right? All I see, if I brought you, you probably bounced, but it appears you're not above rubber stamps. So this is not, and like I said, if you're really concerned about this gas station, you would take care of both of them. But you're only one, and the reason, in my opinion, is because a developer wants you to do it so he can get a tax abatement. And we, the citizens, pay our full share of taxes, and it's a combination what's happened. The last meeting, I didn't know all the criteria because I was working late, so I couldn't speak until, when I got home, the next day I found out you gave five major variances, five major variances for that seven-story monster on Richie's Auto Body. What a disgrace. What a disgrace. And then, you know, I'll say, well, I don't comment for the council meeting, but you ought to be a disgrace if you're doing this. You're not doing it for safety. You're doing it to make a developer rich. Sorry.
Are there any other comments? Have you done?
If there's no other side, I have one more.
Yes.
So if there's no other public comment, I just want to address something that came up in the questions about the environmental. The reference to the closed site was in reference to nearby contaminated sites. And that was in reference to 630 Washington Avenue. This one is still open. So I just wanted to clarify that in case there was any concern. And also to reiterate that the process here is very specific. And as Dean would attest to, it's following the letter of the statute exactly. The authorization is done by the council. It identifies properties to study. If there are other properties that may be, potentially, if you need to be studied, there would be a process for that. The council would have to adopt a resolution and authorize that planning board to do that study. And so we're proceeding with what was authorized so far. And the conclusion of the report finds that it does meet the criteria for D and H and Section S, Section 3 of the statute for redevelopment. And, you know, and there's no question there that I feel that the photographs and the facts, the incidents that happened, the size of the site, the condition of the site, all speak to meeting that criteria clearly. And if you agree, you would vote to recommend that that be adopted by the council as well. Thank you.
Can I get a motion on this motion? Can I get a second?
Second. Can we just be clear? I want to just be clear on what the motion is for. Who made the motion?
I did.
Okay. Is it a motion to declare an area in need, or to agree that it is an area in need in confirmation with the study that was made?
Yes.
Okay. So, what do you...
Yes, go ahead. Just wanted to clarify one thing under the statute. The planning board's role here is to make a recommendation to the governing body, and that would be by way of a resolution.
And then the mayor and council will make the declaration. That's correct.
Agreeing with the plan?
Yes, but for specifics, I want to make sure that the resolution says that we're recommending it on the bases that were provided by the planner, which are for Sections D, H, and then Section 3 for the residential home. So assuming that that's what the motion is.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So we have a motion and a second.
Roll call. Chairwoman Norgerano. Yes. Mr. Banda.
Yes.
Mr. Rattan.
Yes.
Ms. Blomond.
Yes.
Mayor Melman.
Yes.
Ms. Nittelford.
Yes.
Mr. Zangary.
Yes.
Mr. Goyen.
Yes.
Okay. Just before we move on, Mayor, Mr. Donatelli, this one, I believe from our prior conversations, you said that this one is okay. We're not any timeline issues to have this...
The process, Mr. Marano, would be for the board to vote, as they did.
Right.
Realize that the resolution, the vote, would be the resolution next step.
Yes, I think our next meeting is September 8. At that point in time, we would memorialize the resolution. Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're on the same time. Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to PB 2013, 705 and 757 Main Street. Mr. Donatelli, is everyone ready?
We've got a production. We have a management. Just, yeah. Anyone? You guys want to plug into the overhead? Hello? Anyone plug into the...
We have a laptop.
I don't know if we have the right port to set this up. So wait a moment. Should I? I can give you a little quick summary while these cars are setting up. This property, the kind of where we are in the process, is this property has been declared an area in need of redevelopment by the council, by way of this board. The council directed planners to prepare a redevelopment plan, which essentially will become the zoning of the property. That draft was completed, and ordinance was introduced by council, which would approve that redevelopment plan, set forth the criteria for development of the property. Under the redevelopment law, it requires a referral of that ordinance that was introduced to this body for review as to whether it's consistent with the master plan and the master plan reexamination. As you know, this board is very, very familiar with the master plan and the master plan reexam, as is your planner. I'll introduce Chris Colley, also another township planner. He's with Topology, and he's prepared the redevelopment plan that he's about to present. And the role of the board here is to make a determination as to whether the proposed redevelopment plan is consistent with the master plan and then communicate that to some governing body. That could be done by way of a resolution, which could be done tonight, or by way, in the past, we've done it by way of a communication from the board attorney to the governing body, which would need to be authorized by a vote of the board tonight. So if there's no questions for me, I'll let Chris begin. Thank you.
Patty? I have a conflict on this one, so can I partake? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Dean, for procrastinating for a moment as we set up, and apologies to the board that we relate. We were planning on 7 o'clock or roughly, so that's on us. As Dean said, my name is Chris Colley. I work for a firm called Topology. We're a planning firm. We're based in Newark. This is our third time in front of this board. We've been hired by the township, first to do the area in need of redevelopment study for this property, and now to do this flight study, sorry, this redevelopment plan. I have, I would say, no more than 10 minutes for you, so I will be quick. Here we go. All right. I'm gonna give you a little bit of background. I'm gonna walk you through what the plan actually says, and then I'll close with really the most important thing we need of what we're here for. Your role is as the planning board, which is the master plan consistency. So just timing-wise, you'll remember, we were here, I think, in February of this year presenting the area in need of redevelopment study. After that matter left this board, it went to the council. Council in late March designated the property as an area in need of redevelopment. Subsequent to that, we began drafting a redevelopment plan. That redevelopment plan ultimately made it to the council on July 17, 2022, not August 17, 2021. And tonight, we're here for sort of the second step in the adoption process, which is the consistency review. And ultimately, the matter is scheduled for the public hearing back in front of the council next week. So I won't read all this, but this is why we're actually here. This is the requirement that before a redevelopment plan is adopted, it comes to you, the planning board. You transmit a report back, and generally, that report is supposed to include provisions inconsistent with the master plan, as well as any recommendations that you see fit. So last little bit of background, just so we're all on the same page. I think most folks probably know the property. This is Main Street, right? It's in the Belleville up top, Belleville Industrial Center, 705 757 Main Street. About one parcel, a single owner, a little over 15 acres, one slide of conditions so you remember what the property looks like. Showed a lot more pictures last month here. We were here, but that's not our reason to be here tonight. So what's actually in the plan? The redevelopment plan acts as zoning for the property. And, you know, oftentimes, I mean, you've seen redevelopment plans before plenty of them. They're often way more specific than zoning. They can have more detailed controls than zoning. This is a superseding redevelopment plan, meaning the redevelopment plan that we've written will become the zoning for this parcel if it's adopted. And oftentimes, you get questions about, "Well, what is existing zoning?" It's normal, and frankly, almost one of the points for there to be differences between the plan. It's normal, and frankly, almost one of the points for there to be differences between the plan. And so it's a little bit of background. Okay. What this plan allows for are a number of uses, including warehouse uses, light industrial uses, a variety of uses previously permitted under the BD 1 and BD 2 zones, wireless communication towers, up to one, which are presently existing on site. It allows up to two principal structures, so two structures can be built as well as up to one wireless communication tower. Those structures can be up to 50 by feet, which is generally inconsistent with what's allowed there now. Like all zoning, the planning includes setback requirements. That's particularly important here because we do have the one residential property on that side. So I won't walk through each of these individually, but suffice it to say, in our opinion, that there are adequate setbacks and adequate measures in the plan for dealing with those. It does require a minimum of 15 acres, which means that this property, if redeveloped, would be redeveloped as a single project. That's roughly the full size. 35% building coverage, which means that like up to 230,000 square feet or so of development. I'm not going to walk you through all of the standards and design information that's in the plan. But suffice to say, we have details on architecture, setback, sorry, buffers, landscaping, sustainability measures, which I know you recently took your zoning for. Parking and loading, which is very similar to the bridge plant, which recently was adopted down the street. Minimum loading requirements, that's actually something we need to clean up a word in the plan to specify minimum, but the minimum loading requirements for, for the uses. And then finally, last thing on the actual plan, there is an administration process, as you've seen on other projects, under a redevelopment plan, there's often a redevelopment agreement. This plan requires an agreement between the council and any developer who goes forward. Okay. How am I doing on time? Pretty good. Fourth line. All right. So key documents. It's interesting when you read your master plan documents with this site in mind and with this area in mind, because, and board members, I guess I've seen this. There's sort of been like an iteration of different efforts to try to spur investment in this, in this section of town. So we went back from the 2009 master plan. We looked at the two most recent reexaminations as well. And our general conclusion is going to be that this plan advances the provisions of the master plan. This is where I'm not going to start reading through all the text, but I will hit some of the points. This is from the 2009 master plan, which interestingly does specifically mention this property. Sort of the first time that there's a specific recommendation for this property and talks about a conditional use becoming mixed use. And that's a use that obviously never became feasible, likely potentially because of the environmental condition. But the goals of the master plan, I think, really align with the uses and the provisions that we set forth. So introduce uses to create jobs, strengthen tax base, encourage reuse of existing industrial structures, visual environment, enhance the visual environment through architectural standards, things like that that we put in the plan. So 2009, we jumped to 2019. And what you start to see in 2019 and the subsequent plan is, it might be like an effort to become more proactive in this area. The, the planning documents start to sort of implore the township to quote, employ all statutory tools, but also ensure that zoning and the range of permitted uses are conducive to attracting new and modern commercial light industrial, if we're consistent with that. To again, require demolishable structures and environmental remediation, things of that nature. So I said things sort of evolve over time. Also in the 2019 reexamination, this idea of the Valley Business District emerges. There's also a specific reference to the Main Street corridor north of Little and the need to address vacant industrial properties and the need to seek for mediation and redevelopment of contaminated properties. So leaving 2019 and jumping to 2021, after 2019, you adopt these BD ordinances, right? And it's interesting what the planners wrote at the time. They say that we implemented these ordinances, but I put this in bold. So far, there's only redevelopment initiatives that have been successful in promoting investment and recovery. So if you think all the way back to 2009 and the goals that we set forth, to me, this is the township looking back in 2021 and saying, we had all these goals and here we are 12 years later, and really only redevelopment is what has helped convert these properties. Because they really, I think, are some of the most challenging properties that you have in your town. It makes reference to the Bridge Street, uh, sorry, the Bridge Project right down the street. And then again, talks about the importance of attracting new and modern commercial. This is my last slide. Once again, I jumped to that. So this is where it says, the application of redevelopment tools should be explored in the Valley District, sort of referencing the earlier successes and speaking to the BD 2, which I know is not BD, but the, the idea that permitting truck-oriented uses warehousing and industrial uses, including on Main Street, are the appropriate. So that was a very quick summary, sort of a bullet wrap and how we compare it to all the planning documents we've read. But it's my opinion that the plan we wrote advances significant portions of your master plan. You can have it all in sustainability study, et cetera. We believe it's consistent. And our recommendation is that the board finds that it be not inconsistent, which is the sort of weird negative double speak of the law with the master plan. That's all I have. Thanks for listening. Eight minutes. Pretty good.
Does the board have any questions on this? Okay. We have comments from the public? Mr. Fran Tantone?
Do you swear from the testimony of this gift? Will you just take the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Colley, I have a question for you.
Yeah.
Went through it pretty fast. What percentage of the property is designated for residential?
Residential is not a permitted use under this redevelopment plan.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Next, Mr. Jaws. Would you like to come up?
Yes. We're getting married.
Sure. My husband would like that so much. Do you swear affirm the testimony of this gift? Will you just take the whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Yeah, just, um, I'm going to ask you a similar question to last time. But of course, I'm still trying to justify why the property next door, which is multifamily property, when that's the big warehouse still up, that is an area of redevelopment. Why wouldn't that area also develop an area of redevelopment? You're shaking your head.
I, I appreciate the question and it's a, it's a good question. I'm here a month, so I have no idea the answer.
I figured you had the answer. You're right. But you had the answer.
You know, it doesn't really, it's not germane to the question. That would have been decided at the time that the mayor and council initially decided.
Well, this planning board was here, so maybe you stay and answer that for me.
But it's not, it's, there's nothing to do with this question. The question here...
No, no. Good, good. The question here is, you're doing this in an area of redevelopment, but right next door to the neighbor, he's in the area rehabilitation. I'm going to make a second comment again. So why are, why are we here if the area is already designated for warehousing?
I, I, that, that same question was asked at the last hearing and the distinction between the two things was...
But that's the point. So why are we even here? I mean, nobody's going to object to that. But my other question is, was that zone for that particular property in 2019, 2020, 2021 changed at any point in time or has always been the same? Have there been any changes to it?
There has been changes to the zoning of this property, yes.
Like, like what?
Um, it became the BD in 2019-ish. Then it became the BD more recently than that. But these are, so these are zone changes that expand beyond just this one property. These are sort of bigger changes. One thing I'll say about why you do a redevelopment plan, a redevelopment plan allows you to write specific revisions for it.
I know the property is contaminated, but that's another reason that you would do an area redevelopment. But the other property, Jason, that's what I'm trying to understand. Why, why the difference, two contaminated properties? And one gets that rehabilitation and one gets redevelopment? That's the part that I don't understand. And besides, the recommendations at that time in 2019, 2020, and 2021 may have been, unfortunately, the planning board at that time. Uh, I think we just had a case on that where the, the members of the planning board were not legally appointed and they may have made recommendations that may have to be corrected. So you may have a problem there.
Well, we did, we, we, you know, there's two types of master planning documents, right? There's the reexamination, which is the thing you do periodically. And then there's the overall master plan, which happens less, less commonly. So we did go back to your last overall master plan.
Which is what year?
2009. And that was, that was where we started when we were talking about some of the bigger goals.
But I'm talking about the period, because you mentioned periods of 2019, 2021, if there were changes made to the master plan.
Right.
So what I'm saying is, if this board made recommendations in that period of time, they were not, they were not appointed properly at the time to make the recommendations.
It would be my opinion, if the 2019 and 2021 reexaminations did not exist and all I had to go off of was 2009, I would have made a very similar presentation this evening. It would have been my opinion that this, this redevelopment plan is consistent with that document.
All I'm looking for is a simple, simple answer. What is the difference?
What makes you choose 2009?
Well, it's a conditional use at that time. It didn't say that shall be the only use.
I mean, nobody's objecting to a project like that, of course. I mean, it's quite evident that it needs total rehab. But that's my question, why is two different properties and one getting rehabilitation and one's getting a rehab, a redevelopment? That's my question. Somebody can answer that.
I really have that question.
Or maybe our new attorney could, they give me some kind of answers.
They can tell you that the mayor and council decide what properties are going to be studied.
But if it's unfair to the other property, what if he decided to appeal it? The other property?
That, that could happen. That's, there's, there's statutes that allow them the right to do that. But under this, this board can only consider what is in front of it. And what's in front of it are, in this case, the very specific properties that are in this redevelopment plan and in the last case, the two lots. So...
I guess I'm never going to get an straight answer on that.
You're not going to get it at this board.
I'm not going to get a straight answer ever, probably.
Maybe.
Thank you.
Mr. Fleischman?
Do you swear?
Yes. Do you swear affirm the testimony of this gift? Will you just take the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I'm not sure if you'd be able to answer this, or maybe the new planning board council, welcome by the way, would be able to answer this. So I walked in, you know, while you were doing your presentation. I noticed on one of the slides, it says that the, the area need redevelopment designation basically supersedes existing zoning. Would that be a fair statement to say?
No. The redevelopment plan would supersede the existing zoning.
Okay. So the, all right, so the redevelopment plan would basically supersede any existing. So it wouldn't be out of the realm of possibility that if it's a BD or BD or whatever the case may be, that could be amended at some point during the redevelopment process?
In order for, if this redevelopment plan were adopted, in order for it to be amended, we would go through the exact same process where it's introduced to the council, comes back here and heads back to the council.
That's certainly, but it's not out of the realm of possibility.
It's not out of the realm of possibility for any zoning to be amended at any time.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sheldon?
Do you swear affirm the testimony of this gift? Will you just take the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you. Michael Sheldon, 47, Flotscher. Mr. Colley, I want to thank you. You're a breath of fresh air. You've already answered some of the questions and the comments I was going to make. Firstly, I appreciate the fact that you've already acknowledged that currently residential is not permitted on this particular property at this moment. Under the redevelopment plan, no, there's no residential provision.
That's correct.
Right. And based on what you just told, Mr. Fleischman, the redevelopment plan supersedes the ANOR declaration. So if, if there was an effort made to put residential on this property, you basically have to go back to square one, go through all the motions again. You would have to appear here. There'd have to be an appeal before the planning board and the recommendation of the council to change the zoning to accommodate residential.
This, well, the plan doesn't supersede the area need of redevelopment designation. The area need of redevelopment designation exists, right? The plan supersedes the zoning on top of it. So just, that's one point of clarity. The second point that you made, which is, were the council to choose to modify the zoning, that they would have to go through this process again, amend the redevelopment plan? That point is true. Yeah. Good on you.
So at this moment, you just have this global nebulous plan. There's nothing specific yet. You don't have any real ideas at this moment, what type of entities are going to be on this property? It, it's just, it's just a, a, a kind of a blank canvas at this point with a redevelopment plan, but nothing specific. You don't know if it's going to be light manufacturing, retail, et cetera. There's just no specifics at this point.
So as you might know, the property was purchased at some point in the last 12 months. The entity that purchased the property has a plan for the site. Ultimately, this redevelopment plan could be implemented by the current owner. They could sell it. Somebody else could implement it. So, and that implementation of the redevelopment plan would take at least two more steps. It would take a redevelopment agreement and it would take an application here to the planning board.
All right. So Lincoln Equities already has, and on blueprints or paper, a redevelopment plan. They have some vision for how these 15 acres are going to be developed, based on what you just said.
Uh, yeah. I do.
All right. Has that document been made public or is that, is that in the public domain at this point? Or is that something that's only in the purview of you and the, the planning board members? I'd like to see that, that development plan that has been apparently presented by Lincoln Equities. Is that something that can be made available to us?
It's not, it's not a plan until it's submitted as a site plan application.
That's right.
It might be a conceptual plan. I haven't, I haven't seen anything and I doubt any of the members of the board have seen anything. So at some point in time, they'll file their plan and, you know, the public will see it just like any other site plan.
So you haven't seen the plan? Have you, Mr. Colley? Have you seen the...
I've seen concepts from them, yes.
All right. If it were possible, if there's any way to disseminate that information to the planning board and hopefully the rest of us, so we have some idea what, what Lincoln Equities would like to do to this property?
I would defer to the town.
Excellent. All right. You collectively can make that request if there is a, a concept plan.
I don't think it's proper to, to be giving out concept plans that have...
Well, uh, well, maybe not to me or, or the residents, but at least you, I think you should have...
Well, I have it when they, when they apply for site plan. The redevelopment plan hasn't even been approved yet. They haven't got, they haven't gotten to this step. Then they have to get a redevelopment agreement and then the site plan would come. That could be six months down the road.
All right. Well...
Maybe they'll change their mind.
Hopefully now things will be happening in quick succession. And I just plead to all of you, you know, this is a once in a lifetime opportunity. You've got 15 acres here to redevelop. You hear constantly from the residences' township, instead of residential, we need more services. We need things like restaurants and shopping, swimming pool, a community swimming pool. You have a chance now, hopefully, to make some of this happen while the property is still essentially open. I hope you just don't go along with the motions and the developer says, well, I, I really would like to put a lot of residential units in. You just say, okay, whatever you want, you get these.
Residential is not permitted. Residential is not permitted.
I know it's not right now, but it could, it could, it could be.
Why don't we be doing this whole process?
Well, Mr. Colley just said that under the framework, things could be changed down the road.
Anything can be changed at any time.
But I hope, instead of even suggesting, you know, that things moving in that direction, that you try, try to think about the next 100, 200 pairs of Belleville and put on this property's entities that are actually going to help existing residents rather than bringing in an influx of new ones. So please, please try to do your best to help those of us who have been here and will be here hopefully for at least the next 20, 30 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? I'll close this portion.
Before we move on, Mr. Donatelli, I know you have a mayor and council meeting. You said that it would be appropriate, and I have done it in other towns where a letter from the board attorney is sufficient. So if the, if a motion is made to, to move forward with this redevelopment plan and that it is consistent with the master plan and...
this redevelopment plan, and that it is consistent with the master plan and its reexamination, if that motion is made, I would ask that that motion also include the authority of the board attorney to send a letter to the mayor and council and let them know that the board is active, because the mayor and council has a meeting coming up. I know they would like to move on this at that meeting. So any motion, please include that instruction as well.
We normally do a letter, but yeah, it's good.
Yeah, make it.
And should you make a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion, and I'll have the attorney fill in the blanks. We're making a motion to...
The motion will be to accept the redevelopment plan and to report to the mayor and council that the redevelopment plan is consistent with the master plan and 2019 and 2021 master plan reexaminations. There's no, I don't think I've heard any recommendations from the board, so I wouldn't include any recommendations to the mayor and council. So just that it's consistent and that the mayor and council can then move forward with the adoption of the redevelopment plan.
Mr. Marano, just one clarification. I think Mr. Colley mentioned there was a clarification on the number of parking spaces, loading spaces. So I think it's really just a clarification of that being a minimum, so might add just a correction.
Okay, that's fine. So we can add that to the letter. That is part of it. That's certainly, okay, so that would be the motion.
That is my motion, yes. Well said.
Second. We have a second. Ropel? Chairwoman Inouarada? Yes. Mr. Reddiana?
Yes.
Ms. Clomond?
Yes.
Mayor Melman?
Yes.
Ms. Nettleford?
Yes.
Mr. Zangary?
Yes.
Mr. Guyan?
Yes.
Okay, the applications before the board, we had two, 524 Union Avenue and 388, 390 Portland is adjourned until the next meeting, which is September 8th at 6:00.
Is there one other one?
41 Clinton.
Yeah, on the most latest agenda, there's also PB 2203, 41 Clinton Street, that also is adjourned through September 8th. Anyone who's here for those can see on September 8th.
Can I give a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second? Paul and Taylor?
Aye.
Aye.